Yeah.
Hillary, can you hear us at home?
Yeah.
I have to try and.
Hillary, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you. She actually has a graduate class online now this winter days. So between this and the morning, she should be able to.
Good evening. Welcome to the January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting of the Oakmont Borough Council. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amanda Pagnotta.
Yeah.
Jamie Leonardi.
There.
Tracy Holt.
There.
John Arnold.
Here.
Nancy Ryan.
Here.
Lindsay O'Toole.
Here.
You bet.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. As you know, tonight, we will be interviewing candidates for the vacancy and then nominating and voting on that, on filling that seat. The candidates will limit their comments to three minutes to explain why they would be a beneficial addition to council. Following candidate comments, each council member may ask a question of the candidate. Once we do the interview process, because we have six candidates, each council member will nominate their top two choices. A vote will be held to choose between the top two candidates. The candidate with the most votes will be declared the winner. And a motion will be made to appoint the candidate to the vacant seat. There has been a random order of candidates that if the list is on the agenda, and the first candidate up is Mr. Brinkley.
Want me to stand?
We'd actually, for audio purposes, like to stand here with a gray X on the floor. Nothing's changed.
I obviously know some of you from my prior service here, so I will try to keep this short. I don't know if any of you have seen the resumes or not, but I will go through those briefly from my time on council. I served borough for thirty-eight years as a police officer prior to becoming a council member. While I was on council, I worked with Representative Dermody's office as the point person to obtain the flood control grant for the Plum Creek, Oakmont Commons area. I also introduced the outdoor dining plan for Oakmont restaurants. I advocated, and frankly, it was one of the main reasons I ran for office, for increasing the full-time police officer complement with the borough. I also advocated for promotion sergeants and hiring of three new officers. We initiated changes during this period to the civil service laws, which will enhance the recruitment and retention of new officers in the town. Based on my experience negotiating union contracts, I knew a fair amount about pension plans. So as part of the process with going through council, I was advocating for a new pension investment policy and also more stringent oversight with the actuary people. In company with council president Friday, we initiated the talks to get the municipal bond issue that is now in place to do sewer fund improvements, also buy a fire truck, and a variety of other improvements around town. And I was the lead negotiator for the successfully concluded police contract negotiations. Why I think it would be, I would be an asset to council, frankly, most of it revolves around what I just said. I have experience with public safety. I have excellent relationships with both the fire chief and the police chief. I feel that this kind of a relationship would be beneficial going forward as we try to get new things for the police department, like body cameras, additional training. Things these, these are issues that I am familiar with. And I think the fact that I have these kinds of relationships with the police department would potentially allow for these things to be more easily absorbed by the people involved. Frankly, I'm retired. I, I have a lot of time. During the course of my service on council, I was available for extra details, meetings, and things because I don't have the same restrictions that people have to work. And I would also suggest that I had a very collegial relationship with all the members on council. I thought we accomplished quite a bit in the last couple of years, and I would like to continue doing that forward.
Thank you. So we can now take a turn, and if you have a question, why don't we just alternate going from this side around, and the next candidate goes this way around? Does that work? Mr. Arnold?
Well, first of all, I apologize for my impairments. I seem a little presumptuous in asking you any questions at all, Dave. One of the things I will ask is, and I think you've answered it, you wouldn't be willing to serve on committees and have the extra time to give the full, you give your full experience and expertise to the borough, as well as just attending council meetings?
I would. I have done that in the past, and I will continue to do that.
And just, I wanted to emphasize one thing that you are familiar with our major project, which is bond issues at the wastewater treatment plant. I know you've attended both the technical and financial meetings relative to that project, and I, would you please tell us, you know, just about how much time you've put into that, and how familiar, familiar you are with the technical and financial aspects of that project, which is the major project that this borough will undertake for the next several years?
I don't pretend to have a great deal of technical knowledge about the actual project. I would defer more to the engineers and the people that are designing that. But as far as the financial aspects of it go, I advocated along with council president Friday for some time to, you know, take advantage of the favorable financial market to get this bond issue, to deal with the sewer responsibilities that I think the borough has going forward in a sensible manner. I think if we kicked some of these things down the road, it would end up costing the borough an awful lot more money in the long run. So that was behind the goal to borrow, or to get a bond issue at this point in time due to the very financial, or favorable financial rates. I sat through a variety of those meetings with the people that are handling the bond issue.
And you would be willing to put in the time to continue supervision of the financial aspects of that project?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
My general question was going to be asking each person, more or less, what is their most, what most interests them about this? And I think you've already made that clear in some ways, that when you first ran, a lot of it had to do with the police and our, just our police and fire services. And is there anything more you want to be able to do with the police? I'm assuming that is still one of your primary.
It is. And frankly, I look at that as an ongoing kind of responsibility. If you have new people coming in, you need to make sure they're being absorbed properly. The contract, I think, allows for us to have some kind of stability for a reasonable amount of time that will allow us to go into training. And as I mentioned, you know, potentially things like body cameras that are coming. But I think it's very important to have the buy-in from the people that have the use fees. And if they're dealing with someone that they've dealt with on other issues, then there may be more of a trust issue involved, that we're not doing this for the wrong reasons.
Yes. My question is, because we did just have an election, but you had not run, but now you are here today seeking appointment. So why did you not run, or why, like, what brings you here today?
Well, frankly, when I had, would have hadn't made the decision to run last year, that was at the height of the pandemic. I was getting a fair amount of blowback from my family for coming meetings and during that period. And that played into it, along with the fact that I had, in fact, been successful in getting council to agree to the expansion of the full-time complement with the police department and also with civil service regulations. So I felt comfortable that I had accomplished my main goal. But then the opportunity to deal with the municipal bond issue came up. And that only happened after the primary season was over. And, you know, and all the projects that are associated with that, there was a new, a changeover in the fire company. And, you know, I was working with the fire chief to get the memorandum of understanding that dealt with a variety of issues with the truck, the garage improvement, even the siren issue that is percolated throughout the town. That sort of led me at that point to think that I could still continue to serve, you know, if I had the opportunity.
Thank you for answering. Since Lindsay asked my question, I answered it so well. I guess I'll just move on to, you know, if you had a magic wand and could change one thing about Oakmont, what would it be?
I'm sorry.
If you could change one thing about Oakmont, what would it be?
Um. Well, before the last council, I would have said it would have been better if people could work together across, you know, the aisle. I was very pleasantly surprised by my two years on council with how collegial it was, regardless of the fact that, you know, we had a Republican, we pointed a Republican member to the council. I've worked with, and hands in hand with, the mayor, who was also a Republican at that point. He and I hadn't worked before together since we were both police officers. And I can tell you that we agree on absolutely nothing politically. But that was all put in the back, you know, for the local stuff, which I think is where we're actually seeing things getting done. And, and I just was, as I got near the end of my council experience, I realized that I would miss it, and that it was, in fact, something where I felt like I was making a difference.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. I, I just have a quick question, because I know, like, again, I know your passion is obviously the police department, and that's something that you've been, been near and dear to your heart because of your experience. But thinking outside of the police department, what would be one of your number one priorities for Oakmont? Because this is a two-year term, like a two-year appointment. So what would you be, outside of police department, what would you want to accomplish in those two years?
Well, I want to make sure we implement the things that we, we started on, the flood control project, the sewer issues. Frankly, it's came to our attention late in that term that we may have potential problems with the ambulance service. And I look at that as a major issue that we need to get in place so that the people this time going forward know that they have that kind of service available.
Thank you.
Wait, literally, the four questions I came in. So in, two years is a short amount of time, or so it feels like. If you are to say, in the two years, I have been successful, what will that look like at the end of your term?
You know, the completion, or at least looking at the flood control project was something that I was very proud of in the beginning. I mean, that was, I, I felt like, okay, if this is the only thing that I get done here in two years, that was something that will benefit a large number of people. But, you know, the sewer issue, the same way, I mean, I, I, this is one of those things where if you're in your house and you're looking to replace something that's not broken yet, you know, the smart decision may be to deal with it before it creates another series of problems. And I feel like, you know, we recognize that collectively as a group, and why it was important for us to go forward, you know, at that point in time. It's a lot of money, but it would have been two or three times as much money if we hadn't done that, and, you know, the state had started to, to deal with us on those issues. So that, that kind of, you know, stewardship of the public money for a long-term goal, that people probably won't even appreciate because it's just something you take for granted now. But, you know, if, if we can avoid those problems, then I feel like, you know, the government has done her job at that point.
On that issue, let me interject. Yes.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I just don't want it in any way.
Well, I think it's important for the audience, for the public, to know that the bond issue was extremely timely in that interest rates have already begun to fly.
But that's not the issue right now. So I want to keep the interview process equal in that each person asked a question, and we have gone through, and thank you, Mr. Brinkley.
Thank you.
Thank you. I assume we should say then, or?
You don't have to say unless you want to know the results.
Okay.
We'll do any swearing in before the work session. All right, Ms. Felix.
Hi. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah. Perfectly fine.
All right, great.
So you have our attention, Ms. Felix. If you would like to take your three minutes to tell us how you would, I don't want to say it the wrong way, how you would be, or why you would be a beneficial addition to council.
All right, so first and foremost, I was looking forward to come in, but there was a outbreak at my husband's company, and everyone here is COVID positive. And I appreciate you bearing with me because I'm still sick. So some of you may know me, but for those who don't, my name is Hillary Felix. I grew up in Swickley, and after high school, I went and got my bachelor's, and I started a career in sales, and then I later moved to recruiting for engineering companies nationwide. My husband and I, we bought a starter house on Sixth Street in the summer of two thousand fifteen. We wanted to move somewhere that had a good business district, walkable, good schools, cute old houses. So we landed in Oakmont, and we got engaged, we got married, we started a family. We decided to really invest in the area. So in two thousand eighteen, we bought our forever home, and I like to things spruced it up enough that it's not an eyesore anymore coming up Pennsylvania. And we're just about done with major projects here at our home. So we're currently looking for investment properties in the area. So, excuse me, during my professional life, I developed skills that I think would be valuable to council. Communication has been essential in all my roles. I'm very personable. I mean, I can talk to anyone. I've worked with all different types of personalities as coworkers and as my employees. Negotiating is something that was practiced daily in all of my roles. And honestly, I was born to negotiate a contract. I can come up with some creative solutions to problems that arise at work or at home. I've worked with big budgets, so I understand the importance of fiscal responsibility. And like a good millennial, I'm very comfortable using technology like social media for your communication, marketing, public relations. Always looking to learn and develop my skills, improve my skill set, and all of which I feel would be beneficial to the community in a local way. In my spare time, I do a lot of volunteering, and I organize events that benefit the community. I do advocacy work, green projects. Last year, I organized a clothing drive. My entire sitting room was full of clothes and shoes and coats. Sadly, the weather didn't cooperate, but the community did come together in a really wonderful way, which I thought was really special for Oakmont. We do have a diverse community of people here. We have, much like Swickley, you know, we have a very wealthy population that want to do good with their money, and that we have people that would benefit from them. We have great programs here, you know, people like R C A C, groups like The Chamber, the Oakmont Experience, or event organization. But I do think there's a space missing for true volunteerism that benefits all types of people. And I know I can bridge that gap. As I stated in my letter to you guys, over the past year, I've learned a lot about Oakmont and what people want to see improved. Door knocking was a really eye-opening experience. I got a chance to talk to a lot of people from over a wide, different backgrounds, socioeconomic levels. The most common wants from the community that I saw were green initiatives like plastic and glass recycling, composting, infrastructure improvement, obviously flooding, you know, big concern, roadwork, electrical lines moving forward, public safety, possession and safety specifically. But also an increase in communication between the citizens in the borough. And as someone who lives here and as someone who is raising a family here, I'm also very invested in those things, and I'm committed to being helpful in a service. As I stated, sorry?
Sorry, I was just watching the time.
Sorry. I stated before, I wanted, you know, in my letter, I want to increase that communication between the citizens and the borough, work towards implementing sustainable green initiatives that could benefit generations of Oakmonters into the future, like my own kids. So thank you for taking the time to meet with me, and I appreciate consideration.
So I don't know if you could hear us earlier, but now each go around and make a question for you.
Yes, sorry, dog.
So you have mentioned a community that's diverse. What are specific action items that Oakmont can take in a commitment to diversity and inclusion and the safety of all of our residents?
The safety of all of our residents? Well, I guess it would depend on how you would define diversity. As far as public safety, I think the police retention is important to get to, sorry, to allow the police to be able to work with the community members that maybe are on the lower end of that spectrum. Sorry, lost my train of thought. Lost my train of thought here. My COVID fog is very real.
So I'm thinking just in terms of like, you've, you've organized clothing drives for people that may not be able to afford those, like familiar, familiar resources. You've organized marches in town. What more could Oakmont be doing to make sure that we are a diverse and inclusive town?
Well, you know, I think if there were some different events that were for everyone, maybe not just for, you know, The Chamber does a lot with the street sale, and, you know, that's a lot of, I guess, maybe people with spending money, you know, are able to go to events like that and have a lot of fun, and maybe not so much residents who do not have that type of wealth to go around. So maybe something more of like a community garden where people can donate their, you know, donate money so we can buy things, and then people, you know, if they don't have money to donate, they can volunteer and be able to reap the rewards of something that's for the entire community.
Hi, Hillary.
Hey, Tracy.
Obviously, we ran together, so we know each other. But I, I guess my question for you is very similar to what Mr. Brinkley was. It's like, it's a two-year appointment, so it's not like a, you know, full four-year term. Like, what do you, what do you hope to accomplish in that two years?
Green initiatives, recycling, composting. I've been working with, or not working with, but I've been attending community meetings with the Sea Green Group out of Verona, and they're going to start a composting initiative. I know that the contract is up for negotiation for recycling. So I'd like to see some improvement there, and I think those are pretty tangible goals for two years.
Thank you, Hillary.
Hi, Hillary. I'll ask you the same question as Mr. Brinkley, which is, if you had a magic wand and could change one thing about Oakmont, what would it be?
If I could change one thing about Oakmont, I would probably do some road improvements.
I feel that.
My question, I kind of goes back to the election. As I kind of asked Mr. Brinkley, you ran in the most recent election. As I'm sitting here in this situation, how do I reconcile the community's decision to not place you on council and your request to be appointed to the vacancy?
Well, I think I did pretty well in the election. You know, as someone who hasn't lived here as long as some of the other people who ran, and someone who, you know, doesn't have kids at the school, I think I made a name for myself, and I made a lot of connections, and I did pretty well considering. So I mean it when I say I wanted to be on council, and I wanted to run, and I wanted to do things for the community that doesn't just serve myself. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
My, my question for each person has to do with what would most interest them to work on, and you've sort of touched on this with other people. So just taking some of the things you've mentioned, how would you increase the communication between the citizens and the borough?
Oh, well, I touched on that a little bit in my letter, but there are different apps that I think would be beneficial. Oh, well, I touched on that a little bit in my letter, but there are different apps that I think would be beneficial. Big cities, they use apps like this. There are apps called Public Stuff, See Click Fix, similar to a 311-type system where people can go on the app, communicate a need that they have or ask questions and people from the borough or the police department can answer quickly.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, what direct unique qualifications and experience related to the needs of local government would you bring to the council? And can you please explain how this would serve the Oakmont community as well as the local governing body? Let me emphasize, unique qualifications and experience related to local government.
Well, I think there is truly a learning curve with local government. I'm not going to say that I have all the experience in the world, that would be completely relatable, but I do think I have skills. Beneficial to council. Okay, sorry. Like I said, I think I just have a unique background of experience, nothing obviously particularly pertaining to local government, but I, you know, have sales experience, I have headhunting experience, I have experience helping with small business, with organization, project management, a variety of different skills that I think I could attribute to helping.
Does your project management experience include scheduling, budgeting, things like per charts, et cetera?
What application? Are we only allowed to ask one question?
I'm just trying to elucidate sub specifics from her answers.
I do have experience scheduling and budgeting, yes. I have experience scheduling and budgeting, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Felix.
Thank you. I'm going to pop off if that's okay. I have two sick kids still, so. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
We will move on to Ms. Stein.
Hello, everybody. This is a new experience.
A little further up to that. Then they'll be able to hear you on the speaker.
I'm going to thank you for the time that you're putting in in order to get to know a little bit about each of us and how we might be a good fit or not. My name's Mary Kay Stein and I've lived at 805 Pennsylvania Avenue for 35 years. That's about four houses down from the elementary school you're talking about. And my husband and I raised two kids here in Oakmont where they thrive because of the many amenities that this town has to offer. Well, a good school district was certainly a part of it. There were other intangibles, like being able to go see a friend after school by walking, taking piano lessons down the block, being on community sports teams, taking advantage of musical events and the list goes on and on. So I was drawn to this opportunity at this time for several reasons. First, the desire to give back to the community. Second, having the time to do so now as I am contemplating retirement. And third, my 12 years on the Riverview School District Board of Directors taught me how incredibly rewarding public service can be. But it also exposed me to the challenges of public service work, which often comes down to accommodating varying perspectives on controversial issues. In addition, my career as a professor at the University of Pittsburgh has led to the development of other skills that may be an asset to council. For example, I've had success in writing proposals for grant money. I have public speaking experience and I've developed analytical skills that might be useful in tracking policy issues. Although there would be a learning curve for sure and just reading the Boulevard News, the difference between an ordinance and a resolution, I realized I had a lot to learn. So I read through the borough's website. I'm impressed by the range of issues with which the council is involved. I was especially interested in the council's long-term planning that identified both strengths and challenges that Oakmont is going to be facing in the coming decades. I was especially intrigued by the pedestrian plan. I think that developing a more walkable town would enhance Oakmont's profile in the region, could spur more economic development, as well as have health benefits for citizens of all ages. A win-win. I would welcome the opportunity to be part of these and other discussions moving forward. I turn now to your question.
Thank you, and I believe we're back to starting on.
Well, again, I feel very presumptuous in asking questions of someone of your stature. I did check out your Wikipedia entry of the books that you've written. My, I don't know if I have any really specific questions. I think you've answered in your application and in your resume, all the questions that I could ask.
My hope is to be able to learn how to translate my skills from the academy to this local government situation. And with all of your help, I hope I would be able to do that.
Want to go ahead Nancy?
Just going on to a more specific kind of question, just what you would hope to do over these two years. And you've mentioned a number of things here and one of them is you showed an interest in the long-range planning that's been done. And you mentioned the pedestrian plan. Are there other things in the long-range plan that interested you that you would like to follow up on?
Well, I love hearing about the green initiative that Hillary was just talking about. That would be something I'd be interested in. And I'm sorry, I did not hear the second part of your question.
Just other things that, I know it's hard to hear.
Yeah, and the pedestrian project, the long-range planning.
And you've already worked on the pedestrian project, is that right?
No.
Not at all?
No. My public governance experience is 12 years on school board.
And that actually kind of walks into my question. What techniques did you implement while on school board to efficiently effectuate an outcome on a board goal?
I think my biggest skill is I'm a really good listener. I think that people, when I first got onto the school board, I think people thought I was coming in with an agenda and that, you know, that oh, hell is going to break loose. But instead, I listened really hard and I think that all of the changes we made during those 12 years actually ended up being not so controversial and well done. So I listen and I try to take all viewpoints into account.
I'll piggyback on Lindsay's question, which is what was one of your top accomplishments? What was one of the things you were most proud about serving on school board over those 12 years?
The fact that the superintendent at the time was really adamant about changing instructional practices in the schools so that kids were not just regurgitating, but they were actually thinking, reasoning, problem-solving. And he asked me to help him hire somebody. We ended up hiring an assistant superintendent for student achievement that specifically worked on improving instructional practice in the district. Thank you.
And I do agree with John. I think your background is very, very impressive and I think you have a lot to offer as, you know, as a potential council candidate. But my biggest question to you will be, why did you not decide to run for election? Like why did you decide now to be appointed?
Oh, that's a really good question. I think I was just behind the curve ball. I was too late. By the time I realized that I was really itching to get into this kind of work again, the slates had already been put together. And now I will say, when I ran, when I was on school board, I did run. I was elected all three times. But I knew during that time, we had some appointed positions, so I was aware that that was a way to get onto council without going through, you know, a nan-election. But my intention, if I were to be chosen for this, would be to run again at the end of this term.
Thank you. Let's get you down.
Hi, as a sixth grade teacher, I'm especially intrigued about a lot of the things that you've accomplished. But specifically, I'd love to hear more about the Learning Research and Development Center and some of the things that you do and how they might transfer to some of the things you do on council.
The Learning Research and Development Center?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a research center on the University of Pittsburgh campus and people come from different disciplines. They come from education, psychology, sociology. What unites all of them is their interest in improving learning, understanding learning and improving it. So it's called research and development because first we research to try to understand, for example, how cognitive abilities are being developed. And then we design tools that build off of that research that can be used in schools. And we have about 21 faculty in that center, again, from all different disciplines. How could that relate to work on council? I'm not sure. I'd have to think about it. I don't know the extent to which the policy discussions that you have here on the board take account of research that might be available at the state, national level or people probably, well, public policy I know is a field. So the thought might be to be able to look at what research is saying about better ways of deliberating or whatever and then try to bring some of those practices back to our practice here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Stein. Now, we will move on to Mr. Springer.
Good evening. The old X. So I prepared a quick statement and then we'll get on to the questions. Honorable Mayor, President, Borough Member of Council, thank you for the opportunity to sit or stand for your consideration to appoint me to the board of the Oakmont Council. For those that do not know me, I'm Mark Springer. I live in the 200 blocks of Seventh Street. I'm here proudly representing my family and the over 1,200 Oakmont residents from all political affiliations who felt that my experience and skills should represent them in local government. Throughout the application process for this appointment, I provided council a snapshot of my background, both on the public service side and of my professional life. By applying for this seat, I'm not seeking power or influence, nor am I here pushing any political agendas. I only am seeking to serve. I have said in my letter, when we all walked through these council doors, as representatives for the citizens and businesses of Oakmont, our focus is to perform great work for the future of Oakmont. If selected, my goal will be to work with all of you, to build upon our past leaders' accomplishments, work together to solve our current challenges, manage our resources in a fiscally responsible manner, encourage consensus building amongst us all in a constructive way. And lastly, draw upon all of the gifts we have been given to these chambers for the betterment of the community. Now, my public service, I also was a police officer and as police chief and an executive for two police departments, one being a very diverse community. For half of my professional life, I served my community in the public sector. My goal during these times was to improve the quality of the life for the borough that I served. Here are a few of my accomplishments. I've modernized and improved the police department that was in dire need of leadership and vision. I started with an all-part-time police department, David No, and ended with an all-full-town police department equipped with the state-of-the-art computer systems and technologies. I did all of this with state and federal grants, not taxpayers' money. I worked with state and local and community groups in the borough of Wilkinsburg as their chief to bring a state-funded wheat and seed program that generated over $5 million in grants to support all of the initiatives we, as a collective unit, created. I have a strong working knowledge of local government, budgeting, grant administration, project planning, municipal government bidding, sunshine laws, ethics, and the role of government officials, our council responsibilities, zoning laws, and of course, disaster management.
I'm just keeping on time. And we'll start to remember.
You mentioned with your background, like working in diverse areas, so I'm wondering what specific action items can Oakmont take in a commitment to diversity and inclusion?
Oakmont is already well on its way to diversity. I see we have an assistant borough manager. I see we have a all-female council. That's a great step. Majority, so that's a celebration. As far as the community itself, we all learned during the election process that this is an important thing. I don't, just like they said in the past, I don't claim to know everything. But I have council members here that can teach me. I'm willing to learn and I'm willing to accept some of these recommendations and to see if they are a great fit for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. I just have a question on, like again, the two-year appointment. So what would be one of your major priorities for that two years?
Goodness. We're all working together, Republicans, Democrats. This was a very, very tough last two cycles. There's a lot of hate filled up in the community. Back when I was young, we all were together. The best person, the most qualified person was there to serve and they served for the right reasons. I think being united is one thing. Another thing is I'd like to see the streets get improved, the health, as well as improved police training. I know we talked about that. I'm sure the mayor has some ideas. I'm excited and I would be excited to work with the mayor to help. And of course, the other thing in two years is I want to tackle some of the traffic issues that we're fighting with, for example, on Halton Road as well as College Avenue. And I'm really interested about the pedestrian walkway.
My question is, if appointed, would you plan to run again in the future for council?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
My question goes to the election and to some of the things you've been talking about with working with others. During the election, I saw a Facebook post from your campaign page alleging that some individuals running for council would turn Oakmont into Portland. Some of those individuals are now sitting on this council. I'm wondering, how do I, as a decision maker, reconcile your stated position and my goal as president of council to have a group of individuals who work together respectfully, effectively, and efficiently?
On my Facebook page? And it was something about Portland?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if it was necessarily associated with candidates. I didn't come here as a political entity. I came here as a candidate. So.
I'm asking how.
What's your question?
My question is, based on statements you made during the campaign, how can I be assured that you will be able to work together respectfully and efficiently with the other members of this council?
It's a really good question. I think I answered it earlier. We need to learn from one another. They have a different view. Nancy has a different view and I have a different view. I'm prepared to learn.
Thank you.
Long look process, as usual, when you're at the end of the line, you kind of feel like all the questions have been asked, but we do have traffic issues and I imagine since you've lived here for such a long time, you probably have thoughts and opinions as a police officer and how we can handle some of those. Would you like to talk about that a little bit?
The good majority of my career was traffic enforcement, either on the enforcement, but also when I was in Verona and a little bit in Wilkinsburg. We dealt with traffic studies. I think one of the ones that you see there is the red light there at James Street, Verona. That was one of my recommendations as you. as you come into the borough. That's, I conducted that traffic study, and then here is down the line where they got funding, we got the red light. So those type of things are very, very important. Again, you have to work with the state. It's a state highway through there. Uh, so it has its challenges, just as Halton Road has its challenges. But we can accomplish stuff if we all work together.
I have a statement and a question. Because a statement was made before. Uh, my que- the, the question is, would you be willing to serve on committees, you know, that took your time above and beyond just council meetings?
Yes.
And the statement is, and maybe it's a question as well. Uh, you and I campaigned together. I know that during the campaign, as we went door to door, you were nothing but respectful of the other candidates, especially Sophie. And anything that appeared on your Facebook page, I'm, I, I think I understand that people can put things on pages that the author of the page has no control over.
You're not aware of any.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly was not aware of any negative comments made during the campaign, and I certainly know person to person, door to door, you were nothing but respectful of all the other candidates. You were running against Sophie, so you're most respectful of her. But I never heard a negative comment towards any of the council candidates as well. I just want that to be known to everyone.
Do you have, and you have a question?
No, that was, I, I asked the question.
But he didn't.
And I made the state.
But he didn't get a chance to answer it.
He did answer the question. The question was, are you willing to serve on committees? And he said yes.
Longer answer, sorry. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Springer.
Please.
Mr. Michael.
Hello. Um, my name's Shane Michael. In case, um, I'm going, obviously, I know a few of you people. Um, but I, I'm just for the, uh, folks that haven't met me or known me yet. Um, I grew up here at Oakmont. Um, a family, my parents moved here probably back in the seventies, I think seventy-one we moved here. Uh, a lot of the reasons why they moved to Oakmont were the same reasons why a lot of new people, newer families are moving into Oakmont now. So Oakmont, they felt was a, a great community to come and live in, and uh, it was a safe community to, to grow a family, which what they were doing, me and my sisters were, all grew up here in Oakmont. And we all went to Riverview. Um, so those are some of the things that over time, we've seen that Oakmont is continuing to be a, a fantastic community to come and live in and welcoming, you know, new families, you know, all the time that come in. And for us people who grew up here and, and families that are older than me, um, it's still a, a great, fantastic community to live in, such diversity, a lot of things to do in, in the town. And it gave me a good foundation to move on into adulthood. Riverview is a fantastic school to go to. It's a small school. Uh, you get a chance to do a lot of different things. Um, I played sports at Riverview. I was played the trombone for the marching, or the, well, for marching band a little bit, uh, jazz band, so, and, and to get a little chance to work on a lot of different things, which then helped me, you know, get into, to college and then get into, uh, engineering and I'm, I've got, I think I put in my, uh, a bio that I got an engineering degrees and, uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer here in the state. Uh, so a lot of that experience that I have, I feel like I can bring back into Oakmont now. Um, as far as working on a lot of the infrastructure issues that we have, some of the green infrastructure issues. I work with a lot of communities, local communities around Pennsylvania, and I've worked with communities in New Jersey and California. And a lot of these same issues that Oakmont's dealing with at the moment. And one of the things I've noticed working with all these different communities is, um, the communities to me are only as good as the people that are running the communities. And I think that Oakmont has a really good sound foundation of people that like running this community. Um, between all the different groups that are out there, all the volunteerism that goes on in the town, all the expertise that people involve, and people here want to bring to, to the community. And I think that's a really good way to support a community. And, uh, and I want to see us continue to work with each other on, on supporting our community and continuing to grow Oakmont and make it Oakmont in the future, a place where future families want to come and live. And I feel with being a civil engineer, um, and working with a lot of these different communities and seeing, you know, every day firsthand, all the different issues that communities have to work with, the financial side of it, finding the best funds, maybe to sort out their sewer issues, um, getting grant money for, um, maybe just to work on catch basins in town. And getting grant money to, to, uh, be able to, is that three minutes? It's working on a lot of the issues that, you know, my feels with on a, on a daily basis, and I do that on a daily basis in my profession.
Sort of standard question. Would you be willing to work on committees uh, that took a significant amount of your time above and beyond council meetings? So that you could apply your professional engineering experience to help us with some of these problems, such as the wastewater treatment plant, uh, construction, and flood control projects, et cetera?
Yes, sir. We'd love to be able to do that. And I do a lot of that same type of work, you know, as far as hiring contractors, coming up with proposals. I mean, I, I know we have a real engineer that does a lot of those things. And, uh, I, I can bring a lot of that, you know, from the engineering side view of it to a committee such as that.
Thank you very much. Um, Shane, I know you've been on the library board for quite a while, so you've gotten that local experience. And, um, how do you think that will inform you in, in working as a member of council? Can you relate to that?
Yeah, well, the, the library, oh, first off, I think the Oakmont Carnegie Library is a gem, you know, a real gem in our community. I mean, the, the, the staff that works down at that library is fantastic. They, every day, day in and day out, they, they got, you know, all the different issues they deal with from a public standpoint, and, and work with the county to, to promote the library, get funding, get rad funds to come in and, and, uh, work on the, uh, with the issues that we work at the, the library. And I think the experience working on a board like that, you know, I just, it's, it's maybe, you know, I just got elected as president of a board there. So I've worked with it for the last four years, uh, with the, the, the members of that board and, and trying to, you know, work with all the varying personalities, I guess I should say, to try to come to a consensus on, on things that help keep our library a gem, like, yeah. I think I could bring that to this board also.
That kind of rolls into my question, um, because you've had been newly elected as the president of that board um, within a month or two, pretty recently, and, um, you're already, and now you're here tonight asking to be appointed to this position. So I'm wondering how appointing you to the position affects now the library board with your absence?
Well, I, I'd say I'm, I'm really glad that they appointed me president. I mean, it's something that's, uh, near and dear to my heart is that library. And, uh, I'm, I grew up in that library. Um, and I think that the folks that are there on the board are very capable people. And I think there's, there's some folks on that board that even in my absence, I think they could step in and, and run that board. Uh, I don't want to say, you know, without missing me down there, because I really, I really like the folks that are on that board. Uh, but, uh, there's, there's a few new board members, and there's a couple of board members that have been there for a couple of years. I believe that they, they have the skills and capability to step in and do, uh, a great job as a, kind of a, um, the board president if they'd like.
Hi, I was wondering what other areas you'd like to focus on, besides, I know we've touched on engineering, and obviously you must, we'll focus on the library, but what are some other topics that you'd like to, you know, invest your time in, Jan?
Well, two, two topics I was thinking of. Uh, one, uh, Riverview is a fantastic school. And, and I think that the, the relationship that Oakmont Borough Council and Riverview have is a good relationship. I, I am currently a coach for the, the junior high football team and the seventh grade basketball team, so working with a lot of the kids and the parents and, uh, just to try to keep that, that, uh, that, uh, I guess, relationship between the school, the school and Riverview and the boroughs. I think that I, I know this over the years, there's been talk about Riverview maybe going away, and maybe Oakmont joins with Plum or, or Verona, like, joins with Penn Hills. And, and I think that if we, we don't really want that to happen, quite honestly. Uh, because we have our hometown parade down here. It's great seeing the Riverview marching band down there. I don't want to see the Plum marching band, quite honestly. So, I mean, that, that's one thing. And another thing, I think that in Oakmont, I mean, over the years, there's been a lot of, you know, improvements in the town. And one thing I've noticed that I think that we could work on a little bit more, maybe as a community, is bringing in some more performing arts venues. I mean, I know that the Oaks does a great job of bringing these, you know, these different, uh, things coming in. And I think there are, looking at the comprehensive plan, there look like there's spots in Oakmont. There's not a whole lot of spots. I mean, it looks like there might be spots in Oakmont where we could maybe develop some sort of, the library does a good job of this, where they, some local artists might come in and put a, uh, an exhibit down there. They might bring their paintings or their sculptures or whatever. And it's just that little hallway we have down here. It would be nice to see something that's, uh, in a larger, you know, scale, that we might have a, a place for traveling exhibits to come in or have an area where we could have, you know, a, a orchestra come in or some sort of performing art company. Maybe, you know, in the grand scheme, things, partner with the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust and work out some way to, to maybe share resources with them.
Thank you.
To those of you.
Yeah.
Hi, Michael. I'm Tracy. Um, just a quick question for you, because obviously you didn't run for election. Okay? So my biggest question to you is, why did you decide not to run for election and then come for this appointment?
Well, um, it, it was a tough decision, really, not, not to run. Uh, part of, part of the decision is I'm, I'm a registered independent, and I'm not sure, you know, that, I'm not a Republican, I'm not Democrat. And, uh, and I, I believe that, you know, obviously, I don't think that the national political party agenda should affect, you know, us as a community, how we decide to run our community. Um, so I'm not really totally sure how the Oakmont community would handle, you know, an independent here running. And I'm not Republican, I'm not Democrat, you know, sort of. I don't follow any of those ideals at the moment. And so that was part of it, and that's what I'm trying to really, if I do, and they're, you know, running, if I don't get appointed this, or if I do get appointed and I'm running. It's trying to sort out that path to, to go through that political.
Understood. Thank you.
Um, so something that really stood out to me of both what you said and then in your application is supporting Oakmont to be this place where future families want to be. And so I know, even for me, I still explain my home based off of like, oh, I live in the old so-and-so house. So how do we bridge that gap for the new families coming in and really make them feel welcome from day one that they are a part of our community?
Yeah, you're right. I mean, there's, I mean, we live in the natural house. Fifty years, there's still a lot of people think it's, you know, whatever, so and so's house. And, and a lot of it, I think, is the, the nature of Oakmont, you know, that, uh, you know, people live in the, you know, there's a lot of people live in Oakmont for a long time, and they really, you know, they, they associate things with different areas of town like that, you know, so-and-so's house. Uh, I, you know, and that is a, the thing to overcome in the town, because there's a lot of people that have been here for a long time, people coming in. Uh, I, I think community events, you know, we get, when we have community events, like, I like to say in the library, I think it's a fantastic place to have, uh, you know, especially with, with families that come in, you know, and, and there's a lot of, of different volunteer groups that go on. So if you get the new people coming in, maybe to be associated with the library or, or some other, uh, the library always has some sort of fundraising. They just had one recently for kids. Uh, they had food trucks and, and stuff outside. And, and the folks that are here in Oakmont, they associate with the library because they grew up in town like these, so they could, um, maybe there's an intermingle type of thing we could do between the folks that lived here for a while and the new groups that are running.
Shane, I apologize. I called you Michael. You have one of those names. It's like, you know. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
And our last candidate, Ms. Bower.
First, last time. This time, um, to those of you, I haven't had a further reading yet. Um, I'm Anne Bower. Um, and I am a former government attorney, um, tax attorney and law professor. I'm currently pursuing a master's in public administration at GSPY. I have another three boys, um, elementary school age and pre-K. Um, we moved here in two thousand eighteen precisely because Oakmont is one of the few walkable communities in the greater Pittsburgh area with, um, great schools. Um, currently, I'm the treasurer of the local soccer club on Twinborough, um, where I do the budgeting and all the financials and all the state and federal filings. Um, I work on the, uh, yearbook committee for the PTO at Tempest Street. Um, and I was on the pedestrian committee. We haven't met for a while, but, um, but I still, um, I'm greatly concerned with pedestrian safety, traffic safety in the borough. Um, so why would I be a beneficial addition to council? Um, based on my review of the survey responses for the, um, comprehensive plan, as well as just talking to, um, residents, my sort of priorities align with a lot of theirs, and that would be public safety, as I just mentioned, um, traffic and pedestrian safety. Um, but also making sure our first responders have the resources they need to protect our citizens and enforce the laws. Um, and I include infrastructure improvements and environmental sustainability in that sort of public safety realm. I think that those are long-term public safety concerns, um, that I would prioritize. I also value our vibrant business district, and I think it's important to, uh, support local businesses as well as, um, encourage the development of new business. Um, and I feel very strongly in the importance of transparency in governments. Um, I think there's a lot of improvements that we can make there, um, just to educate the community about what current issues are, what the borough is considering, um, and things that they might want to weigh in on. Uh, and finally, uh, the strategic management of limited financial and geographical resources that, um, can be a challenge for a small town like mine. Um, so those are my priorities. That said, um, as a member of council, I think it's important to represent all of the residents. Um, so I think it's very important to pay attention to the smaller issues that might not affect a large majority of the people, but that are important nonetheless. That's where my experience as a public servant and an attorney comes into play. Um, I am first and foremost, um, a good listener. Um, you can't help your clients as an attorney unless you understand the issues. I'm a collaborative and creative problem solver. I'm used to taking a large body of law, applying it to unique individual taxpayer situations, and coming up with interpretations and policy recommendations that are in the best interest of the public. Um, that said, I, you know, in that regard, I'm used to making tough decisions. But I engage in due diligence, assess the risks, um, consider the consequences of my decision, um, I apologize.
That's great. Not, not, I don't mean to cut any, in terms of cutting people off, but that's a great tool. Um, okay, sorry. I think you're first, Amanda. Thanks.
So we met briefly this time last year in the same, um, scenario. And so my wondering is, why not go through with going through the election process and run in the pre- previous election?
Um, so I did actually file a petition to run, um, when I found out that there were already four women running, um, with my party affiliation. And it seemed that we both really, you know, wanted the same things for the borough. Um, I went through my petition, um, with plans to run in the next cycle. Um, I didn't want the, not saying I would have been successful, but I didn't want the way I got on council to be by picking off someone who I thought was equally qualified.
Yeah, that's very honorable. And I know, you know, I was there with you too. So I, we were together, all asking for the appointment and everything like that. So I know you mentioned, um, like, a little bit about the strategic management of financial resources, and I really like that, because I think that that is definitely important. And last time you were here, you mentioned about grant writing and stuff like that. So can you tell us a little bit about all your, like, your experience in that, because I think you do have some?
Um, I have very little, actually.
Okay.
In grant writing, um, that's part of the reason I'm going back to school and come for public policy to develop that experience, as well as, um, more experience with evidence-based policymaking, data collection and analysis. So I don't have a lot of experience right now in grant writing. I do have a lot of experience in great research, um, because I, I've done a lot of research to find out about different grants, um, over the years for organizations that I've worked for, but I've never actually engaged in the process of, I've never been the one to actually do the writing of that. Are you willing to do that if you're a queen? Absolutely.
Uh, actually, my question kind of dovetails. I was interested in your leaving, have you left the law? Or is the public administration adjacent? Like, how are this, those two dovetailing your, like, goals?
Uh, so I maintain my license so that in the event that I want to return to practice, I don't have to make up all my CLE credits, and I'm still staying up to date on changes in the law. Uh, but I am not practicing. I am not insured. I will not give any advice. That would be. I guess, you know, not, not practice, but, you know, I, I, I'm not practicing right now.
So what, what about public administration? Nope, no problem. Nope, no problems.
Uh, so when I was teaching law, um, my research, um, legal scholarships are theoretical. And I wanted, um, to affect change. Uh, so I wanted to go back to school to develop those research and analysis skills so that I could engage in evidence-based policymaking and have the data to back up these theoretical arguments I was making in my legal scholarship. Thank you.
Thank you. So my question, um, I see on your resume, and you mentioned it, that you're the treasurer of Twinborough Soccer. Being on council can be time-consuming. Do you, you plan to remain in your role with Twinborough if appointed, um, to the vacancy? And how has your role on that board, um, how would they be affected in your absence?
Um, I don't plan on leaving my role. Um, unless there were the conflict and in that event, I would refuse myself from decisions on either end. Um, I'm actually doing part-time at school this semester so that I have the time to take on new projects and initiatives. Um, and where I appointed, then this would be my project and initiative level, um, that I would be devoting my time to.
Yes, I'm sort of following that. Um, you, you've only lived here a few years, but you've really toned yourself into the community. And I, I'm guessing you've probably met lots of people in town at this point in it. Which is something that usually takes a while, but you're in all these activities. Um, it's nice to see somebody that's so interested when they first move here. Uh, you've kind of touched on most of my questions, so just to give you a softball question. Um, you mentioned that one of the things that you're interested in is historic preservation in the community. And what were you thinking of specifically with that?
Um, so my interest in that initially was sparked when I was an attorney for the IRS. And I'm taking on a lot of people that were taking on, uh, loopholes in the laws about deductions for facade easements, um, in historical districts. So, but I got to learn a lot about it. Um, and I think that, you know, on the one hand, that's an area where people can apply for grants. And to, you know, restore old buildings if it's their storefront. Um, so I have an interest in that. And just overall, I mean, I live in a really old house, lived in a really old house before that. It's just sort of a pride, you know, passion of mine to take care of. Um, you know, what was built before and make sure it lasts another hundred years.
Yeah, because it's kind of an interesting idea. It's not something I've ever heard anyone mention. Uh, like with respect to say the old churches or the, some of the older buildings that we have.
I mean, I, 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 I mean, also with an eye to the future, but, um, you know, I think I have an appreciation for the past, especially, you know, architecture. Um, that I think is important to preserve.
Two questions, one of which is, I think it's already been answered. Uh, you would be willing to, I presume, uh, continue with the, uh. Amount of time necessary to serve on some of these committees, especially now that the pedestrian commission has now become a pedestrian committee. And I know you've been acting in that before, and it's certainly something that's needed, especially in surveying the sidewalks. So I presume the answer to that is yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And just another aside, I, I, I believe you're still teaching.
I'm not teaching right now. Uh, no, I'm just attending school as a student right now.
So you will have the time to serve on these committees or at least one.
Yes.
And of walk the sidewalks.
Yes.
Uh, which is one of my pet peeves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a second, remember, I want to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight and for submitting your information and being willing to volunteer in our community. This community certainly benefits from all the people in it who care about all the different boards and groups and council. Um, and are willing to give your time. So I thank all of you. And. So you're going to, you'll, um, go in alphabetical order. Is that?
That's fine.
Fine.
That's fine.
Um, to present your two nominations, so your top two candidates. Um, and then working there, you're right. Mr. Arnold.
Hey, my top two candidates, although I find tremendous. I have to just say my tremendous respect for all the candidates. Never seen such a body of, you know, qualified candidates so distinct, so, so just. Uh, you know, so, I, I'm not distinct, but so, uh. I'm using, I, I use the word, but, you know, so qualified, et cetera. But my top two candidates are Mark Springer and Dave Frankly.
Trying to figure out my, my, um, letters, because you're right, this is the old, I was looking at this list and these are not.
Um, I, um, yeah, I think all the candidates are amazing. I mean, I, it's, it, I sat, like I said, I did this two years ago. Um, when, and I did the same, I did the same thing, and I was up against a number of great candidates. So I commend all of you and I commend all of you for wanting to be involved. Um, my two top candidates are Hillary Felix and Mark Springer. Um, I think, um, Hillary, obviously I like the sustainability. I ran with her. Mark, um, I know that you, um, spoke of bridging the gap between the Republicans and the dumb press. I think that was really important because the last election was very contentious. Uh, both of you, and the other reason, one of my reasons is both of you ran for election. And I don't, and I know you tried to run and everything, but, um, you both ran for election and it was a painful process and you know how it was. So, um, that's my two.
Uh, my top two are Hillary Felix and Anne Bauer.
Amanda.
My top two are Mary P. Stein and Hillary Felix.
David Frankly. This is very difficult. And I, um, Anne Bauer, and as everyone else has said, it's, any one of you would be great. And it just makes it very difficult to, to pare this down. And I hope whoever doesn't get chosen does consider running next time. So, um, good luck to everybody.
Me, my, and I, I, um, second Nancy's thought of yes, please run next, next election, election, certainly. Uh, my two candidates are Dave Frankly and Anne Bauer.
We have a tie.
We have three ways. We have three ways to pick between. Anne Bauer, David Frankly, Hillary Felix. Those are the good times too.
Right. So I guess we would vote through these three and then take the top two of that, though, I would think. Oh, sorry. Oh, good. Yes. Okay. So I would think, so we have a tie of three. Um, so my thought in looking at the procedure is that then we vote between these three to get down to two, to then do the final vote.
I think that makes sense, given your policy. I would just note that the policy that's in front of you is an Oakmont Borough policy as opposed to like the Borough Code policy. Um, so you do have some flexibility, but I think that's, you know, that's a consistent way, given how the policy reads now, follow it.
So does that mean we each choose two people again? Out of taking these three as the, as now the slate, do we each choose two?
I think we each choose one.
I think everybody chooses one.
And then two with the most votes will then vote, one vote between those two people. Does that make sense to everyone? All right. Okay, so I'm trying to, I was gonna do, I guess we'll do alphabetical order backwards. I'm just trying to keep it fair if, um, people worry about like having to go first or anything like that. So, wait, go backwards?
Lindsay's first.
Why, I always have to vote last.
So I go first.
There we go. There we go. Okay. All right.
Okay, um, I will vote for David Frankly. Hillary Felix. Hillary Felix.
Yeah, Tracy.
Hillary Felix.
Dave Frankly.
And I'm going to vote for Anne. Um, so that.
Hillary, I have plus three for Hillary, two for Mr. Frankly, and two for Ms. Bauer. One, one for Ms. Bauer, I'm sorry.
So now the final vote is between Hillary Felix and Dave Frankly.
Just do it the way we did it last time, since we know our order.
Oh, the same way? Or you mean alphabetical regular?
There's a tie, right?
There's a tie. It's, they're, they're down to two candidates. We're down to Mr. Frankly, Ms. Hillary Felix.
Nancy?
Um, Dave Frankly.
Amanda.
Hillary.
Jane, Jamie.
Hillary.
Tracy.
Hillary.
John.
Dave Frankly.
And I'm voting for Dave Frankly. Um, so Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Mayor, uh. I wish you didn't have to come down to this because my, uh, my thoughts would be. For council to be able to come together and agree on one candidate, because it is the seven of you that work together. As we move our town, um, in a much, in a, uh, positive direction. I'm not the one, the mayor does not vote with the council, but yet I am put in the position to make the choice of a candidate to work with the other, um, with the six that are on council right now. I don't know if I'm permitted, uh, if I decline from breaking the vote to ask council to reconvene and talk some more on this and come to a consensus so that we do the best for the council to work together. Now, I don't, Kate, I, uh, I don't know if that's, I mean, it's, it's very difficult for a mayor to make a decision to choose a candidate that, that the mayor does not work with in the voting procedure as we make, um, decisions for Oakmont. I mean, if I have to, I will. That is not a problem.
I think, but if you don't, it goes to the vacancy board.
Yeah.
If I could weigh in, is that?
Yes.
Um, so if you have, council has thirty days. And that includes mayor doing the tie-breaking to fill the vacancy. And so, I mean, there is always, if council wanted, just because, um, as, as you had asked. Um, you could reconvene this meeting, give everybody a couple of days to think about it and see if you're still split. Um, I know that we kind of went through pretty quickly. And that would give, if everybody wants to walk away for a few days, as long as the next meeting's publicly advertised, that's definitely allowed. Um, if you go past that thirty days, that's when the vacancy board picks in. Which means that person appointed to the vacancy board is instead the tie-breaker rather than the mayor. Um, and there's fifteen days for the vacancy board to make that decision. When we did this timeframe calculation, Scott, I believe that our thirty days would be up Sunday. I think we're on the thirtieth. Does that sound right?
I believe it is, yes.
So, um, you know, given that it's Tuesday. You could, you know, reconvene at a public meeting anytime between now and then, if you wanted to try again. Um, or council could say, no, we don't, we don't want to. And then the mayor can either break the tie at this time or say, I'm not prepared to do so. And then, you know, eventually go to the vacancy board.
Can I ask a question about like the vacancy board? And I, I know I learned this in the local government class, Scott's, I don't like, you know, but, but can you explain a little bit more about how that works? Like with the vacancy board or who, like who's on it or?
There's.
Go ahead. Okay, you answer.
Sure. There's one person every year appointed to the vacancy board. So the vacancy board is every member of council, not including the mayor. And then this one additional person, and I'm sure Scott may have even told me who our vacancy board person is.
It's Joanne Anderson.
Okay, so that's your, that, that's who would be your, your tie-breaker vote essentially. So it's the six elected officials plus the one appointed official. And that's that role. And the only role the vacancy board serves is to fill a vacancy on council or other elected positions. So the vacancy board is all of council plus that one committee member who's been appointed by council.
Well, Dan President, uh, what would, uh, the council favor the mayor to do?
Um, well, why don't we poll council, um, to see if you would like, if, um, you know. If we should finish this up tonight or extend it to the next meeting, though, that's pretty close. Um, I'll say to start it off, um, if that's helpful, I would like to have a resolution tonight. Because I would hope that the person that will be filling the vacancy can get a packet and can be, um, prepared to sit in on the work session meeting, um, for next month. Versus, um, having, you know, advertising for another meeting to have beforehand, kind of rushed, and then get them in and kind of try to get them up to speed. So we'll, we'll start over here and we'll just pull around. I know I went first.
Um, I'd like to see us have a resolution tonight.
Yeah, I guess I could probably go either way on it, but I'd probably prefer to have a resolution tonight, possibly.
I would prefer a resolution tonight, but I, I'm also fine with having another, having another one. And of course, I think we'd all like expediency, but I am, I understand Zeb's point about not wanting to force the issue and have everyone live with her decision.
And I think on that same sort of line of thought, we have all heard everybody's speech and everybody's comments. And Joanne has not heard any of that. Uh, so she would be voting without the knowledge that sensibly we've gained from meeting each person. So for that reason, I would vote that we take care of it tonight.
I'd like to see a resolution tonight.
Okay, well, why don't we, should we do another vote? And see if anything's changed. And then, um, I guess we'll call upon you, the D D, as the mayor. Uh, so we'll go alphabetically this time. Um, Mr. Arnold.
David Frankly. David Frankly.
Jamie, sorry, Hillary Felix.
You would think I had this.
At least my vote hasn't changed, it's Hillary. Amanda?
Hillary.
Nancy? And I'm also Dave, so I guess we are still.
My choice, listening to all the candidates, and as I also repeat what other council members have said, all great qualified candidates. It's wonderful to see that many people in Oakmont interested in serving their community and the volunteer efforts and time, and it's a very hard decision, but at this time, I'm going to go with Dave Frankly.
Congratulations, Mr. Frankly, and he will be joining us back here at the table. We will square you in at the. Well, may I have a motion then to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you to everybody that came.
It'll win.
Thank you.